What's up? Welcome to afternoon study session. And today, we have a nice topic. About pre-flop ranges when we go 250 BBs deep. And funny thing is, we have had solvers around for a few years now. And we have a lot of frequencies for 30, 50, 100 BB stacks. Like here is from mastermind, some overall pre-flop frequencies. But it's hard to find ones for 250 BBs deep. Because the thing is that when you make a solver calculation for 250 BBs, it requires shitloads of computer resources. But true thing is that on PLO Matrix, they have 250 BB deep. Solution, it's only for 5 max. So we are skipping UDG. Well, let's see how the ranges differ. And I didn't test the frequencies, I tried. But we even try to see here how the solver trends when stacks go deeper. So we are looking at here on the very left column where there's race first in. And 30 BBs, 50 BBs, 100 BBs. Especially what we want to see is the button. Because the shallowest the stacks are, 30 BB button opens 27, 50 BBs 34, 100 BBs 47. So the deepest the stacks are, the more it opens from the bottom and it goes up quite a lot. Almost 10% or even more. Per stack level. And then cutoff is 20, 24, 30. And then early positions don't raise that much. And what happened from the small blind, it's 23, 28, 34. So it goes up a little. Thing about PLO is that when we go over 20% of the hands, the strength of the hand starts to drop. All the crew looking hands are around 20%. When we go beyond 30%, then most hands beyond 30% start to be pretty marginal. So I wouldn't follow the exact same strength and suddenly start to open 75% from the bottom. So don't go crazy. And if we look at the three bet percentage here on the middle of the big ones, we can see that 30 BBs, it's between 5 and 8 on most positions. And then versus late positions, it's 10 to 12. And then 50 BBs deep, it follows almost the same pattern. Small changes. And 100 BBs deep, slightly less three betting versus early positions. And then it's between 5 and 8. And late positions between 8 and 10. So three betting goes down a little. But it's not huge drops in percentages. Yeah, one might say that from, let's say here, small blind versus cutoff drops from 9.8 to 7.3. So it drops 2.5 percentage, which is almost 25%. So yeah, it's a big drop. Then when humans play, the difference between 9.8 three betting to 7.3, there are some differences, but it's still all the crew looking hands. Crew looking three betting hands. And then when we look at the call calls, you can see that 30 BBs deep, solver doesn't call call anywhere from except the peak line. There's 0. something on most. 50 BBs deep, very seldomly. And then 100 BBs deep, it starts to call call from the bottom. So you can see a bit difference here. 50 BBs deep, from the bottom versus UDG, are less than 7%. When we go 100 BBs deep, it's around 15. And if we go 250 BBs deep, you can even call more. The deepest the stacks are, the more position matters. Because what happens in 100 BBs deep game? You're out of position, you flop the nuts, you check race, flop, pot the turn, you commit yourself. Or you check call the flop, check race the turn, you commit yourself. So 100 BBs deep, very often on the turn, you can make a big committing bet. Which removes the times you have to play the river. When we go 250 BBs deep, then you often have to play the river. And on the river, there's often a lot of money behind. You still might have 150 BBs behind, but is 200 or less. So you often have a pot size bet left on the river. Which means that the one in position has a huge advantage because hidden mate bluffs. The out of position player has to act first. So position matters more and being out of position sucks a bit more. So that's a really important thing to remember. And what we're going to do is we're going to use PLO Matrix. And we have here, we'll open one grid for 250 BBs deep and one for 100 BBs deep. And we compare. We've done this before. So we compare how the actual ranges change on different hand categories. I don't have the frequencies, I'm very sorry, I'm trying to get them. But even creators of Matrix said that they can get it to me at September. So we don't have those. Really important thing to remember is, solver plays against another solver player or solver strategy. So it plays perfect post flop, perfect free flop. It knows the opponent's free flop ranges, it knows the opponent's frequencies. So solver can play marginal hands perfectly. And as humans, the mortal ones, it's hard to play perfectly, especially the marginal ones. So most likely solver likes to play a wider ranges when deep. But I often tell people, if they are uncertain how to play 200 BBs deep, I say that skip the crappy hands. Because the deeper we are, then the more the mistakes will cost us. And we want to make sure that opponent makes more mistakes than we do. So we can actually, in real life, small stakes tighten up the range a little to make sure that when we play post flop, we will have slightly stronger hits, better hands, better draws. Really common adjustment, how people in small stakes or your opponents will adjust to 250 BBs deep, is that they take passive. They don't check race flops with hands, they check race 100 BBs deep. They call more instead of making pot speakers. So they get a bit scared, most of them. So it's important to know your opponent. Then there are opponents who go crazy. 250 BBs deep, they can give you a lot of pressure. The aggressive players, they can create problems 250 BBs deep. Because if you are the guy who calls with draws but cannot call the big river, but without the nuts, then the aggressive player will just run you over. So it's important to know your opponent. And let's see first some opening ranges. And we can go to cutoff where the difference is probably bigger than from. Well, UDG can use the same middle position, there shouldn't be a big difference. Well, let's see cutoff. So here we have 100 BB cutoff and micros. And there... Did I press it right? Yes. Oh, it's, no, no, no. I didn't. So here is a cutoff opening range and here is 250 BBs deep. And let's start by some single suited pocket kings. And let's see what the grid looks like. So if you're not familiar with PLO Matrix, then this is king, king, single suited. Middle, there's the pairs, double paired hands. The top part or the right part, top right part, is when it's suited the king, it's the good suit. And the bottom left part of the grid is when it's not suited to the top card. Like here, ace, eight means hand ace, king, eight, and it's suited the king, not to the eight, ace. And here, ace, eight, ace, king, eight here, means it's suited to ace. So top right suited the top card, bottom left suited to the middle card. And this is 100 BBs deep. Yellow means raise and if opponent three bets, we call. Red means raise, if opponent three bets, we re-raise. And then the blue one is raise and fold to a three bet. So king, queen, nine, single suited, is folded to a three bet. Even suited the king. Here we can see that it doesn't fold to three bets in position that much because there's more implied odds. That's the key. When we are deep, there's more implied odds. So you can see that when it opens kings, it raise folds only the crappy ones. And even out of those, it sometimes calls. Sometimes folds. And then you can see that all ace, king, king suited to ace is very often actually a four bet. So the ranges are wider. You can see that the opening range itself, which means that it opens everything else but the gray boxes. Then there's not a huge difference. Of course, it doesn't open any triple kings. Here it opens triple kings with queen check and then hits borderline. I don't think the EV is really high with those triple king hands. So you should probably fold them already. And then 100 BBs deep, there's only 7 dews, 6 dews. 200 BBs deep, we add 8, 3, 8, 2. So king, king, 8, 3, even 100 BBs deep, the EV of these boxes or hands is really low anyway. So the opening range doesn't change that much. But how it reacts to three bets, change a lot. Half of the boxes are blue. There's only two boxes that are completely blue and other ones have different frequencies. And there was something I was about to say that I just totally forgot. I tried to remember, what was it? Oh yeah. Really important thing about being deep, I should have said this in the beginning because this helps you a lot. If no one raises, it doesn't matter how deep you are. Because you cannot get 100 BB stacks in a single raised pot if someone doesn't raise. So if your opponents are passive, it doesn't matter how deep you are. Because we hit something, we bet flop, bet turn, bet river, they call, call, call. Or they call flop, call, turn, fold river. It doesn't matter how deep you are. So the more passive your opponents are, the less you should worry about how deep you are. You can play the same ranges as 100 BBs deep. Because if opponent raises only with the nuts, it doesn't change much. It just gives you more implied odds when you have a draw versus his nuts. When the opponent becomes type of opponent who starts to raise with more than nuts. Or you have a habit of being aggressive and you raise with bluffs and semi-bluffs. Well, bluffs doesn't matter. Well, it does actually, because you can barrel more frequently. When people start to raise, then the stack depth starts to matter. So as long as you have that passive opponents, don't worry even if you're 5000 BBs deep. Okay, let's go back a little. That was single suited kings. Let's see some smaller pairs. Because the thing is, when we are deep in high SPR situations, we often like to have river equity instead of flop equity. And one thing that you can do to sort of see what kind of hands have what is to go to proper draws. And then open up the range explorer, we've used this before. And then we put here some kind of hand like ace of hearts, 10 of hearts, 8 of spades, 7 of clubs. And then we have the nut high tab here. And now it shows that it makes the nuts 3.2 percentage on the flop and 8.1 percentage on the river. Now, of course, one of the problems here is that if we make the nut flush, then if there's a straight flush possibility, it's not the nuts. And especially when we put hands like king of hearts, king of spades, 8 of hearts, 5 of diamonds, or even 5 of spades. Now, you can see it's really small, I hope you have a big ass monitor. It makes nuts on the flop 8.7% of times and nuts on the river only 4.4% of times. The thing with these pocket pairs is that if the board is king, dews, dews, 5, 4, then pocket kings is not the nuts. Because quads would be the nuts. So even when you make the nut full house, the oracle doesn't think it as a nut. So the pocket pairs, this kind of exploration is a bit flawed. But the idea is that we want to make nuts on the river, not on the flop. So if you're very deep, you would much rather have nuts on the river than top set on the flop and then on the turn, straight completes and on the river, flush completes. So probably let's go to some smaller pocket pairs. Let's do single suited tens and see what happens. We know now what happens with kings. 100 BB deep, we open the pretty much top quarter, top left where there's Broadway cards. And then we open all the double paired hands. And some of the ace ten ten, even not suited to ace. When we go 250 BBs deep, we see that the grid itself doesn't change that much. So the gray area doesn't really increase. There's some crappy ace ten ten hands suited to ten. But once again, the trend is that some of the hands that are here blue turns to yellow, which means that we call three bets in position a bit more. But especially with these pocket tens, if you are not sure how to play 250 BBs deep, when to call the three bet, but you are comfortable with 100 BB strategy, then play the same. The difference is not huge. It's very marginal in reality. Uh, we are in the cutoff. And let's go to the really small ones. What happens when we have pocket sevens? Or was it sevens? Yep, 7, 7, single suited. What happens here? 100 BBs deep, there's not many. Double paired hands and ace, 7, 7, where the side card is 7 or higher pretty much. So Broadway 7, 7 suited an ace and double paired hands, 250 BBs deep, pretty much the same. Funny thing is that it drops 7, 7, 3, 3 from cutoff, but it adds some connected mid-ha rundown with sevens. So same amount of hands almost. But it drops some of the weaker ones that don't have that much nut potential and it adds some hands with some playability. And I would expect the same trend to happen from the bottom. Let's do some rundown from the cutoff and then move to bottom. And let's start from jack, ten, single suited. Well, not much. 100 BBs deep, only the connected ones, good rundown. 250 BBs deep, doesn't change much. There's a couple of more hands added, the marginal ones. But the EV of these hands in the threshold is not super great. So doesn't change that much. So let's pick up and let's go to the bottom. 100 BBs deep, 250 BBs deep. And let's compare the single suited pocket sevens that we did there. 100 BBs deep, oh now it's six, six. Who pressed? Six, six. I wanted to do 7, 7. So once again, top left of the grid, which means where the two side cards are above 7, it's an open. And then some high suited ace and king high suited and connected. So pretty much all the playable 7, 7s. 250 BBs deep, the grid itself doesn't change. The gray area doesn't increase or decrease. Yeah, queen, queen, 9, 7, 7 and queen, 8, 7, 7 becomes playable, but that's irrelevant. The basic idea that the grid itself is the same, but all the blue ones turn to yellow and actually some ace, queen, ace, ace, 10 suited becomes a four bet. So solver would four bet ace, jack, 7, 7 suited to jack. Which is one weird... Three betting, I have no idea why solver does that. My advice is don't. If we start to three bet ace, jack, 7, 7 suited to jack, then this is those weird balancing three bets. It's not for hand value because ace, jack, 7, 7 suited to ace is not a four bet. So you can just use your paint skills and paint these as an orange ones or yellow ones. Don't raise them. So the basic outtake so far is that at least in position, 250 BBs deep, our opening range doesn't change much. But we don't fold to three bets in position that much. Only the worst hands we would fold and even those are sometimes call. So to make things simple, if you open from cutoff or bottom and you play the three bet out of position from the blinds, don't fold. You can call with almost anything because you have huge implied odds. You have huge advantage with your position. So let's turn to out of position. And then in the end, let's see if we have time, we can check some three betting ranges. But let's do the small blind. Because I think big blind doesn't, it will just call a bit more. But let's see from the small blind. And let's start with those single suited kings. Because those not premium pocket pairs are always a problem out of position. And yeah, it plays pretty much all the kings except the three ones. So the gray area is the same, but the color now there's a difference. So what we have here is the red is three bet. I mean, it's open from the small blind. Oh yeah, oh sorry, sorry. This is not, sorry, 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 my bad. This is small blind opening range. We are not interested in that. We are interested in small blind versus bottom. That's what I was supposed to do. No one said anything. Shame on you guys. So bottom opens and then we have the kings. So now it looks more as expected. So when bottom opens, 100 BBs deep, solver's small blind, pretty much three bets, all the kings it plays. King, 5, 4 is the lone exception. And it folds to four bet unless it's double paired Broadway or it has an ace, it's suited to ace. Or Broadway ace, king, king suited to king. So it calls with only the cream, then a cream, folds everything else if opponent four bets. But it raises everything. When we go 250 BBs deep, you can see that now the grid changes. This is the first time that the grid actually starts to change. Because now there's some added hands. We can see that we have green here, here and here. And now you have some green here, some here and especially here. So it goes a bit wider. But a lot of the raising hands become a calling hand. So pretty much with all the bad kings, especially suited to king, there's one Broadway card, it starts to call more. And you don't have to remember that, okay, king, queen, 5 is a three bet fold and king, queen, 4 is a call. Because I would say that to make it easier, rule of thumb, if you have king, king with the Broadway and the small one, you can call. If you have king, king with two higher cards, Broadway cards, you can three bet. Because the EV is very close to each other. And how would we play those single suited pocket sevens? 100 BBs deep, well, we don't. This is pretty easy. Ace, 7, 7, ace, 8, 7, 7 is the only three betting hand from small blind. You can color that as a gray. You don't have to remember that there's one hand that we three bet from 7 and one hand we call. Because pretty much the easy outtake is that if bottom opens, you fold all pocket sevens. Well, I wouldn't probably, but solver wants. 7, 7, 6, 6 is a three bet. 7, 7, 5, 5 is a fold. So the EV of 7, 7, 6, 6 is not super great anyway. When we go 250 BBs deep, now it actually adds, it three bets a bit more of the pair hands. And then we have some calls. Ace, king, 7, 7 is a call. Ace, queen, 7, 7 is not. So these are probably for, when we are deep and we have the nut component with suited ace, we have some implied odds. If 100 BBs deep, all of the hands are fold, then 250 BBs deep, it's not a money making machine to call with ace, 10, 7, 7. Because ace, 9, 7, 7 is not profitable. So the value of ace, 10, 7, 7 when called is very small. So you can play pocket sevens in exactly same way. So you don't have to worry about that one. Okay, small blind versus bottom. What happens when we go to those double suited rundown with an ace? Like ace, 9 rundown. So 100 BBs deep, it doesn't call with anything. It raises all the ace high rundown. Ace, 9, 7, 5, ace, 9, 8, 7, ace, 9, 8, 5. So ace, 9, 8, ace, ace, 9, 7, connected rundown, they are a three bet. 250 BBs deep, we play exactly same hands. But with the worst ones, we start to call. So there's a small difference on the small blind, 250 BBs deep. And 100 BBs deep, solver likes to three bet a lot. I mean, if we look at the frequencies. Oh, it's so small. It's making me fear. 100 BBs deep, small blind versus bottom. Oh, there is three bet. I wonder why its number is so small. It's here in the middle column. We can check this one. So small blind calls, bottom open only 2.7% of times. So very few hands and it three bets 9.8, so around 10%. And the overall defending frequency is only 13.5. Or 12.5, sorry. So solver doesn't even defend the magical 20% that was the absolute truth for many years. So versus bottom, calls 3%, three bets somewhere on 10, to round it up. So most of the hands, he likes to... So most of the hands, it likes to three bet. And what we see here is we start to have calling hands. So I would expect when I get the frequencies for 250 pp is deep, is that the three betting frequency doesn't really go up a lot. I, I think it might stay around the 10%. But then the calling percentage goes up a little, especially with the hands that have some nuttiness in them. And let's do those smaller run downs. Nine eight double suited. 100 pp is deep, only nine eight seven six double suited is a playable hand. So nine eight seven five would not be 250 pp is deep, nine eight seven six. Still playable, but now we add slightly more. But the difference is not really huge. And let's do the nine eight singles suited to see if we have any hands. No. And no. Alright. So from the small blind, pretty much you can play the same ranges and you don't go really far away from the good strategy. Okay, um. Let's see from the big blind. And versus button. What, what happens here? And let's see, some singles suited queens. Is it? Always a call. Well, 100 pp is deep, yeah. And it calls a lot. It raises some double paired connected suited ace. Pretty standard. 250 pp is deep, nothing changes that much. It's just, you can see that it raises all the double paired queens. 250 pp is deep, it doesn't because the nut value of queen queen seven seven is not that great. 100 pp is deep, when the SPR in three bet board is three and a half, the value of any set is super high because opponent stack off with any pair, any draw. 250 pp is deep, when the SPR is really high on three bet boards, the value of bottom set goes down a lot. So always remember that, pretty much when we three bet, we want to have nut potential. And double pair hands are, are strange hands because they have a lot of potential to hit strong. They will make a set or once almost one out of four times. But they, they don't make the nuts that often. But in three bet boards, the value of any set is super, super high. How do we play the crappier rundown? Crappier run downs. Let's say nine high rundown singles suited. What happens? 100 pp is deep. We, we don't. 250 pp is deep, a bit more. But not significant change. Because once again, even here, nine nine seven five six five suited to nine or seven is really close to threshold. So the EV is really close to nine nine seven six, which is a playable. So even if you play nine nine seven five, don't worry. It's not going to be a pretty big factor in your win rate. It's more about your possible skills than the actual hand selection. Uh, then last thing that I, I want to check is how much we three bet in position. So let's say button versus middle position because we don't have UDG. Oh, let's button versus middle position, 250 pp is deep and here it's 100 pp is deep. So what happens with double suited kings? Is it always a three bet? Nope. 100 pp is deep, button versus middle position, when we had double suited kings, it's almost always a call. Double pair suited ace, three bet, everything else is just a call. 250 pp is deep, kaboom. Now you can see that it three bets almost everything. Even the blue ones are three bets and fold to four bet. All the other ones are three bets and calling a four bet. So now, when we are deep and we are in position, double suited kings is a pretty strong hand still. It can flop very often over pair flush draw or something else. Now it becomes a three bet. Well, what about queens? Problem hand. 100 pp is deep, call. Same pattern, connected one suited ace, three bet, everything else call. Uh, 250 pp is deep. Almost always at least we call, but now we three bet slightly more. All the connected coordinated double suited queens becomes a three bet. Because also when we three bet in position, we put a lot of pressure to the UDG because the SPR is going to high. Even if he four bets, he cannot stack off on any flop. That's, that's the difference in, in four betting game. Uh, we don't talk about what do we four bet? Well, it would be the, the red ones. But if we want to four bet, we don't want to four bet. Well, let's see. Let's see actually, how does the Solmer? Well, we saw the pattern. So let's see how Solmer plays aces from middle position when it faces a raise. Oops. Is it always singles suited aces? Okay, 100 pp is deep. The whole grid is red. You four bet aces because you played SPR one. 250 pp is deep. You can see a bit of a change. And thi- this is one of the important things that don't overplay aces when you are deep. Singles suited aces, it, it four bets everything. There's some balancing frequency where it's a draw, but basically this should, this could be all red. 100 pp is deep, you four bet aces always. You can SPR one, boom, you shove any flop. Rinse and repeat. When we go 250 pp is deep, singles suited aces, we can see that here on the top left, of course, triple aces as quoted. You, you can still four bet all the crude ones, all the double pairs and so on. But then these ace ace, queen four. So ace ace, high low type of hands, they become just a call. Oh, that's it out there. You can check this on YouTube. We'll upload it later today. So you can see that ace is not four bet anymore. Then double suited aces, now this is a different story. It's such a strong hand because you will flop over pair and flush draw so often and you can stack off with high F with your average. That double suited aces i- is always a four bet, no matter what stack depth, no matter what position, no matter how many opponents. Just remember that double suited aces is a powerhouse and you can just four bet it all day long. Double suited aces i- is like aces in Hold'em. And then those singles suited rainbow aces are a bit worse, but double suited aces is a powerhouse. So all in all, what did we get out of this? You can play normal ranges. And the only adjustment you should make, if you want to make one adjustment, is don't fold to three bets in position that much. Call a bit more. See the flop, you have huge implied odds. Then the second thing is that when we are deep, our four betting range shifts. We don't four bet that much. Aces, uh, let's see, when we have those double suited run downs. Here we can see that we open and we call a three bet with a lot of the double suited ace high run downs. And 250 pp is deep, Solmer doesn't like to raise ace king jack ten type of hands. It four bets with some frequency, but actually not much, I would expect to have a bit more. What about ace queen? Does it change at all? Nah, not really. Okay. So what probably happens is that Solmer will three bet a bit less when deep. It calls, keep the SPR high. And e- especially out of position, it doesn't want to three bet. And it makes sense because 100 pp is deep, you three bet out of position, you create SPR three and a half, which means that if you hit the flop in any way, you can just body then get it in. 250 pp is deep, you can't. So you can use the same ranges. The only exceptions are, the, the easy adjustment is don't fold to three bets in position. And in general, don't overplay hands out of position. Don't, we are not going to three bet more out of position. We can just call a bit more. And, and try to be in position. But the frequencies itself doesn't change that much. It's just, how do we react to three bets? And then when we three bet, don't three bet all aces when deep. That's super important because there's a lot of players who still three bets all aces, 200 pp is deep, and then stack off on any flop. And then they complain that, oh, my aces gets always cracked. Well, it does. When you see bet opponent folds, when he has a poor hand and when opponent has better hand like two pairs or better, he shoves and you can get it in with 25% equity. And in the long run, you will lose a lot of money. But there's some basic principles about how to adjust from 100 pp to 250 pp and you don't have to change your pre flop game that much. If you are not sure, then I would say that start to fold the crappy health of the hands, the bottom of your range and focus on the top part because opponents are not playing perfect. The, the importance of domination becomes higher. You dominate your opponent's hits and draws, make a lot of money. And then the concept of redraws, you hit the nuts with the redraw, opponent has only nuts, you free roll for 500 pp. But tho- those are the huge situations that we want to be in. So don't overplay. If, if you flop the bare nut straight on a flush draw board, don't put raise. You don't want to stack off 200 pp is deep versus normal opponent. So that's, that's how we play deep. And, and when deep, it's not the pre flop that is the most important aspect. It's the post flop. You have position if you have, how you use it. Can you make big flops on the river? Because now you have the opportunity. So then the range definition, knowing your opponent, having a solid post of strategy, that matters a lot more. So 250 pp is deep, remember, we don't want to commit with flop equity. We want to commit with river equity. So if we hit the top set on the flop, you don't have to raise it. Opponent puts you on a set and it's really hard to get money out of him. So more deception. And even with top set, we can see what happens. Because the most important decisions are often made on the river. So we want to have a strong hand there. So more deception, a bit more slow weighing, calling, using the position. Alright, thanks for this. That's another afternoon study session and hope you enjoyed it. I will see you later. Bye bye.